You know, whatever you want to do.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I will call to order the June 23, 2022, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today. Clerk to the Board, Tony Maranick; Assistant County Counsel, Nate Boderman; roll call, Commissioner Schull.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savas.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise. I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you have joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Orders will be enforced in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you please introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. There are three public hearings today. The first public hearing is approval of annexation to Tri-City County Service District, Proposal CL 21-010. Ken Martin is the county's boundary consultant. He will give a brief presentation. Welcome, Ken.
Welcome, Ken. Please introduce yourself.
I'm Ken Martin. I'm your boundary consultant. This is a single lot annexation to Tri-City Service District, which is a county service district for sewers. In this particular case, it's an existing single-family dwelling and had a failed septic tank. This is inside the city of Oregon City. You must be inside the city of Oregon City in order to be annexed into Tri-City, and we'd recommend approval.
Thank you, Ken. Do any commissioners have any questions on this item? Seeing none, I will now open a public hearing. I will take the first person, first in-person testimony. I don't see anybody on this, Tony. Correct?
Chair Smith, I do not have anyone registered in person or on Zoom for this item.
Okay. I will now close the public hearing on this, and I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the board order approving the boundary change proposal CL 21-010 and annexing the identified territory to the Tri-County Service District as of June 23, 2022.
Second. Commissioner Savas has moved the board approving the boundary change, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none. Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schull.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, commissioners. Gary, what's next?
The next public hearing is approval of annexation to Tri-City Service District, Proposal CL 22-002. Ken will also present.
And this is another small piece inside the city of Oregon City. It has an existing dwelling on it, but the city has already granted approval to some additional development, and they need to be annexed into the district. The services are there, and we'd recommend approval.
Thank you, Ken. Do commissioners have any questions or comments on this? I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I'll take in-person testimony first. I don't see anybody. Tony, do we have anybody online?
Madam Chair, do not have anyone registered to speak. If there is someone who would like to provide public comment on this public hearing, please use the raise hand feature at this time. Madam Chair, I have one entry. Ms. Barbara Smith. Apologies, her hand has been lowered. I do not have anyone registered.
Does she want to comment?
She does not.
Okay, thank you very much. I will now close the public hearing and ask the board, is there any further discussion? I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve board order approving the boundary change proposal CL 22-002 and annexing the identified territory to the Tri-County Service District as of June 23, 2022.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Savas approving the boundary change and seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schull.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Gary, what's next?
Thank you. Thank you, Ken. Third and final public hearing is first reading of an ordinance repealing Chapter 8.10 of the county code, short-term rentals. Nate Boderman, Assistant County Counsel, will give a brief presentation.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, commissioners. The public hearing today does relate to the repeal of an ordinance regulating short-term rentals in the unincorporated areas of the county. Chapter 8.10 of the county code was adopted in November 2020 and generally establishes a registration requirement for operators of short-term rentals and further creates a framework for regulation and enforcement of such uses. While this ordinance was adopted over 18 months ago, the implementation of the regulation has been delayed on a couple of occasions and remains ineffective today. And this is largely due to the fact that the program has never received a funding allocation or other means of financial support to implement the work that would be associated with administering such a program. Staff most recently recommended that the board move forward with a public hearing for the first reading of an ordinance to repeal Chapter 8.10 of the county code in lieu of further delaying implementation of a program that had no clear path to funding and no other means of supporting enforcement of the adopted regulations. Most recent direction of the staff, to the staff from the board was to prepare an ordinance for repeal in consideration at a public hearing and to minimize the amount of staff report or staff time dedicated to this project moving forward. So the materials before you today implement that board direction and would begin the process of repealing the entirety of Chapter 8.10 from the county code. And just to be clear, this repeal doesn't affect those provisions in the county zoning ordinance clarifying the status of short-term rentals as an authorized use in most areas of unincorporated Clackamas County. So with that, consistent with the board's prior direction, it's staff's recommendation this morning that you do hold a public hearing, read the proposed ordinance by title only, and announce a date for a second reading of this ordinance. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Nat. I want to talk about process for a moment because I know there are people in the audience and online, and I'd like to give some understanding of what we're trying to do today. In order to make any changes to the proposal as written, we must repeal it. That means it goes away. Now, there are some commissioners who've been talking, and I have been recently notified within the last probably 24 hours of some talking points and maybe some a little softer landing that we can get to on short-term rentals, but that'll be a full discussion today. So I don't want there to be any misunderstanding what this board action will do because in order to change it, we must post online what those changes are. We must be transparent. We must have a fiscal analysis, meaning how much money will it cost or not cost to do whatever this board decides. So if an action is taken today that is contrary to what you think that you want to have happen, we are committed, I think, to going forward to having further discussions. But what is on the agenda today is to repeal Chapter 810 because I believe, and maybe some of my board members do too, is quite onerous. Anybody with a vacation rental would have to pay $800 right up front to be able to do the program, and then they also pay their transient room tax. There's not a hotel or an inn in the entire state, the entire county that does that. So I believe that is, that's not right. Basically, it's not right to single out one entity over the other for that. So I think it needs to be more equitable. Any further steps on this needs to be more balanced. We've had a lot of emails on it. There's going to be a lot of discussion on that today. So I don't want there to be any misunderstanding on the action we're taking today. Thank you very much. I have a couple commissioners in the queue. Commissioner Savas, you're up first.
Yeah, so I'm going to speak to two things. So I'll just address a couple options. I did speak to legal counsel, Mr. Madcor, yesterday or Tuesday. I think it was Tuesday. And my understanding, his suggestion at the time, based on what we were trying to do, was to have the hearing today and if there are, if there is either a majority consensus or majority to entertain the proposal that I have here today, then his recommendation was, was to keep the hearing open and maybe extend the second hearing to maybe four, five, six weeks from today. And that way to incorporate either a change or a complete repeal or whatever it may be so that, you know, even as a substitution, that there's the movement, there's momentum. It's fresh in our minds. Staff knows what to do and then bring it back in short order. That was, I walked out of his office with that kind of understanding and recommendation. So we can do several different things, and I think that if we simply just repeal it and then wait for another point in the future, my concern is it may not come back in short time. Our members will be lost as to the details because this is very complex. I think this is a great opportunity for us to make some good policy and give staff the clear direction because I know that this has been very painful for staff over all this time, that we have really had difficulty navigating. When we addressed it six months later, we forgot half of what it was that we wanted to deal. So I think we ought to act while it's fresh, and I think that timeframe that Mr. Madcor suggested would be perhaps ideal. Even if we do do a complete repeal, we can substitute it with some new language. So that said, I just want to just say for the audience prior to opening the hearing is that we, how we got started on this journey was that at the time, when we first started, short-term rentals were not legal in Clackamas County. And the goal was to make them legal, but within some boundaries, if you will, want to call it that. And we already had at the time examples of short-term rentals that were doing well, great neighbors, great citizens. Things were fine, but also examples of just the opposite. And I think that's the ones that prompted us to act more clearly. We went through a number of discussions. I think that each of my commissioners shared something that I agreed with, and each of my fellow commissioners shared something I didn't agree with. And the fee, I thought, was a problem. And for the people that are well behaved, well, behave is not the right word, but the good operators, the people that are good neighbors that own these, operate these STRs shouldn't be burdened, I think, with a fee. And basically, a fee that would basically be targeted more towards the bad, the people that weren't in compliance, out of compliance or potentially were not good neighbors, if you will. So that's why I really came up with a proposal here before us today. And maybe for the folks that are going to testify, it might be of value, Chair, if you're all right with that, just to read over quickly the proposal I have here in general without getting too much in the weeds at all. And that way, people kind of know what it is that we could do. And maybe, I think, I don't think everyone's going to be happy with this, but I think that we're doing something, the proposal here would do something for everyone, and I think it's a good landing spot.
So you asked me a question, and I don't have any objection at all to reading the language in there, but, and we may eventually act on it. We have another hearing scheduled after this that we could use as a policy session and not a hearing. I think it's going to be much easier on the process, on staff actually codifying something in code, repeal this, and we can move forward. And we can talk about language all day long, but it needs to be very transparent and just not for the people who are interested in this in your particular locale. But this involves the entire Clackamas County, just not a little subset. So Nate, would you like to comment on that for me?
I guess just from a procedural standpoint, you know, what's been prepared for your consideration here is the repeal ordinance. And so that's the materials that have been prepared for you. If we were to entertain some other alternate proposal, at least it's my opinion that we would, we could do that in, on a separate track, so to speak, right? And so, because if we were to effectively substitute or repeal for an amendment today, we'd have to have specific ordinance language. And that's not to say that we couldn't do that, you know, to extend the hearing or some other procedural mechanism. But again, what's been noticed and what's been prepared is a repeal hearing. And if there is no intent from the board to implement what is on the books currently, our recommendation has been and continues to be to repeal that, get that off of the books, and to substitute that with an alternative proposal. And that can be done, again, on a separate alternative parallel track, however you want to characterize it.
Commissioner Savas, I'm most interested in hearing your language.
Sure. Sure.
And I do want to not minimize what you're trying to do here. Do you want to present your language now?
Sure.
Or would you like to let the other two commissioners comment first?
Well, why don't they, let me just address one thing of Nate, and then I'll hear my commissioners, and I'll read what my proposal is. How's that sound?
Thank you. I think that would work best.
Yeah, so this is not a rebuttal. It is that I think there are elements of the ordinance that we want to keep. Okay? But not everything. So that's why I see it as a modification. So I appreciate your, you know, the options there, but just wanted to lay that out. It's not that everything in the ordinance is unacceptable.
I would agree. I would agree. Okay. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chair Smith. So I really appreciated Administrator Schmidt sending an email this morning to all of us that there's a little bit of differences, and I'm sorry. Because I'm a lawyer, I notice the differences in the language and the nuance, and so I'm confused, seeking clarification about what we're doing today. Administrator Schmidt said, "Commissioner, so everyone is clear. If there is a board majority to support Commissioner Savas's proposal, you will terminate the ordinance change, which in my mind says we will terminate repealing this ordinance." Is that correct? Okay. You can, you don't have, and then-
Don't let him comment.
We'll end the hearing, first reading, and go back to policy session to further flesh out this proposal. So it seems like we're talking about two different things.
Gary, would you explain the intent of your email?
Yes, my language was sloppy, Commissioner. I apologize. So you've heard the legal analysis. I'm giving you the policy analysis because I'm not an attorney and I don't want to be. It's cleaner, it's cleaner to repeal the ordinance. Commissioners, this ordinance goes into effect in seven days, and staff will not implement it. I'm being really transparent to you and the public. We will not implement it because we have no funding to implement it. It's cleaner to repeal the ordinance. And as Nature said, on a parallel, the same-time track, consider the new suggestion Commissioner Savas has advised. Do a policy session ASAP and then do a new ordinance with that new language. That is my recommendation to you because this is getting messy. It's getting very messy. Thank you.
Okay, so you're, instead of saying you will terminate the ordinance change, you would have said you will repeal the current ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Fisher?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I just want to, at least how I understand this, that we can revisit this. We're looking at an ordinance with Commissioner Savas's language as a way to go. But at this point in time, it would be procedurally more, I don't want to use the word correct, but cleaner if we just repeal what we've already done and then revisit this. Because I have to say, it looks good, but there's nothing. If we're going to change language, we need to be doing this at policy sessions. And I kind of feel a little bit like we're doing it here on the fly in a public meeting. Our policy sessions are public. So why don't we just do it that way? Why don't we just go ahead, repeal what we have, and then based on the information you've given us, take a look and see what we can move forward with?
Okay.
I mean, I'm just thinking procedurally, it's a lot more, it's cleaner. I don't know.
Yeah, well, that's a question. So I'll just respond to your question, Commissioner Schrader, and that is that, I mean, effectively, whether we repeal it within, you know, seven days or repeal it within six weeks, we're still repealing it, right? But this actually keeps our feet to the fire, keeps it fresh in our memory. Staff can work on it, and we can get it done. A policy session in between that is perfectly acceptable. But I'm just trying to capture the momentum and make sure that we keep our memory banks as fresh as possible so that we can get through this because it's been dragged on. And I think that part of that has been we have forgotten a lot of stuff, which is natural. No one's to blame, but I don't know how many years we've been, when was the first discussion we ever had on this? I think it's been at least three years.
2019, I think.
Commissioner Savas, Commissioner Fisher has a point of clarification, and then you can read in your talking points.
Sure.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, so this question for Nate. So there are two parts of this ordinance. One is the regulations, and the other is the funding mechanism to implement the program and execute it. If the commission decided that the regulations were to be kept, but we found a different mechanism to fund the program, would we need to totally repeal it or would we not amend the ordinance?
Well, to be clear, you haven't adopted a fee, which was the originally proposed mechanism to fund. And so you have the regulations on the books. You just don't have a way to pay for it. So you never adopted a fee.
You don't have a way to what?
You don't have a way to pay for it right now or you haven't identified a funding source. If you identified a funding source or wanted to come up with a different means of funding the program, it wouldn't necessarily require a change to 8.10 per se. It would just require you to adopt the fee, adopt the fine, adopt the, you know, grant or whatever the approach should be. Now, if you have, if you want to make changes to the actual framework of the registration program or the regulations, that, of course, would require a change.
Okay. I think I understand. What I'm interested in knowing is, I think Commissioner Savas is right, having the momentum, we're focused on this now. We have a lot of things that we have to focus on. The regulations, we're threading a needle with a lot of community engagement and community input. This current board has not even been publicly briefed on the framework of what is in the ordinance. And so I'm looking at the smoothest way through, but I am in agreement about the funding of it for $800 to register is exorbitant, especially when you compare other jurisdictions and what to do. So I'm not sure the cleanest way through. I'd rather see us amend something, if that's possible, but have a policy session in between. So we just get this done.
Okay, fine. I think, Commissioner Savas, you've been patient in waiting for what you want to present today. Go ahead with your talking points.
Sure. I'm just going to go, just read the bullet. It's just five, six, seven, eight bullets here. I'll just read them off. So basically, the proposal is to have a simple, free, and online registration that includes confirmation of the life safety requirements, which would include like a smoking, working smoke detector, fire extinguisher, maximum occupancy, emergency contacts for property owners and a management company. And then the setup cost can be paid for by seed money provided by the TDC. And I talked to Samara Phelps with Tourism and Cultural Affairs yesterday. Second bullet, complaint-driven property enforcement by DTD code enforcement to respond to parking, noise, and other code issues. I talked to Mr. Madcor about this as far as, you know, that would apply no matter what, frankly, because every property is subject to code enforcement. Every citizen has a right to do that. Third bullet, the fines, which would fund the code enforcement, would be set at a rate that, again, fully funds the program. So it'd be fine-based for the funding for the code enforcement. Fourth bullet, establish a three-strikes rule where if the same property receives three code enforcement actions within a two-year period, that property cannot be a short-term rental for a certain number of years. You could say for three years, five years, one year, whatever it may be. Next bullet, the TRT, the transient room tax. 2% portion for administration will continue to fund the tourism tax administration. So currently, what that means is that currently the tourism TRT ordinance provides 2% of the funds, which is about, the last year prior to COVID was about $92,000 of funding that went to finance to administer the tax portion for administration. So we could leverage that, is what I'm saying, and keep that in place. Next bullet, the program may require some upfront assistance from the TRT funds, seed money, to set up the registration, the website, and start whatever enforcement of the program as situated. So that's where the money would come from, the setup. Next bullet, law enforcement calls would still go to the appropriate emergency or non-emergency number for crimes in progress, disturbance, and trespassing. Next bullet, begin with a one- or two-year pilot. So this will be a pilot program, see how it goes, and we can tweak it. And perhaps, last bullet, perhaps at the end of that pilot period, we could evaluate the program's effectiveness and the funding and consider whether or not we want to put a cap on short-term rentals. And I'll just read the entire bullet here. A cap on the total number of STRs each property owner may actively market, A cap on the total number of STRs each property owner may actively market, and a cap on the total number of STRs in the county, just due to the homeless or the housing crisis we have. Last bullet, of that, that is a limit on the number of STRs in a particular radius to address reductions in housing stock for residents in likelihood of maybe a street where it would be nothing but STRs. It could be the party house environment situation, which might be a distraction to other communities nearby. That's what I have, Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Savas. Seeing no other comments, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing and listen to the folks who so wonderfully come and tell us what you think. There's been a lot of information thrown at you today in public process, in legal process, code enforcement, and just the practicality of passing something like this. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this issue. I have several cards of in-person testimony. You folks will go first, and then we'll have the people online. The first person up today is Rob Bruce. Sir, please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and sir, you have three minutes.
Chair Smith, my name's Rob Bruce and live out in Welchess. So bear with me just a minute as I kind of regather my thoughts, because you guys delivered some really great information, which really took all my notes, and I may as well just crumple them up and throw them out the window now.
Well, maybe not, but go ahead.
Still kind of relevant. So I was madly scribbling notes there as you guys were talking. So let me get cracking, and thanks again for having us here for the hearing. One comment was, an $800 fee was exorbitant. I understand you don't want to charge fees, I'm not a big fee person myself, but these short-term rentals cause way more issues than a hotel room does. They, I don't have time to go into that, but they need to be charged something, because these are where the problems are coming from. They're run differently than a hotel. There's absolutely no comparison to a short-term rental and a hotel. So to compare the two is just apples and oranges. You know, talking about the date, it's due in seven days, we can just reset the date on this. The other one is, you got to realize that us up here giving public testimony, you guys don't live in a neighborhood with four short-term rentals next to you. You don't live this on a daily basis, and that's why we're here. You don't understand to have your community just totally turned upside down. It's not even a community anymore. You know, somebody made the comment, it's been painful, this whole process. It's been painful because it's been drug out for three years. If this would have been dealt with in the first six months when it was presented, it wouldn't be painful. We'd have the program in place, it would be working, it would not be painful. The can has got to be stopped, kicked down the road. So we need to move forward with this. So my main points are that, please understand, we're not against SDRs, but we're also for community. And we are losing our community quickly. These are the issues that your voters take notice of. Most SDR owners are not residents. They are not the voters. Your voters cannot get emergency services in a timely manner. Already, this has made worse, as they are simply tired of responding to emergency calls regarding STRs. I've had more than one occasion where I have called 911 and been hung up on, because they know I was calling about a STR. Hung up on within five seconds. Twenty minutes later, the ambulance showed up trying to save people's lives because there was a brawl in the street, or alcohol, or drug overdoses. We don't have emergency services in our communities anymore because of short-term rentals.
Please wrap it up, sir. You're at your end of the three minutes.
Families can't afford to live here anymore. That means schools are gonna close. Service workers can't afford to live here anymore. But we want to have services and restaurants that attract tourists.
Sir, please wrap it up. Please add your concluding statements. We understand where you're going with this.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Up next is Joe Mazara. Sir, please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three
My name is Joe Mazara. I have a PhD in clinical psychology. I retired practice about 20 years ago. We've been living on the mountain for quite a few years. And we should have this room filled, but I can tell you why they're not here. There's something called learned helplessness. What it means, and it was quoted by Martin Seligman about 40 years ago, what it means is people are afraid that nothing is going to happen, nothing is going to change. Now, we're, for the past two months, we've been meeting at my house, and we've had a lot of people at the home, talking about what can we do, what can we do, will they listen to us, will they listen to us? We're trying to convince them that they will listen to you, but you have to continue to fight. You were up there once, and you knew what's going on, the interest there. So my job is to promote and push. Now, you have awakened a sleeping giant, I've got to say that. Yamamoto said this in the Second World War when we went to battle with the Japanese. What basically has happened, the Park District, for example, it went down two to one, because we awakened the crowd, and we let them know that it wasn't a gift of good conscience to vote on. And they said, okay, we understand. We found out there were a lot of flaws in it. We voted against it. This is different. This is our lives, this is our homes, and we vote for you folks. Now, STRs, they're owned by 30 different states, the owners, Australia and China. They can't possibly vote for you people. They can't. We are, we can, and we will. But if you don't support us, we go for somebody else. That's my speech. Plain and simple. I've got extra time. If you have a question, please ask.
Thank you for coming forward. We heard you very much. We understand. We will move forward on something, but you may object to our process. I'm sorry you've objected to our process. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming today. Up next, Fran Mazara. Please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Gary is handing out a collection of papers filled with data for you. Hello to all of you. Mr. Shul, we have not met, hello. Everyone else, longtime friends. I live in Welchess. We have lived on the mountain since 1987, in Welchess for 20 years. We are familiar with the fact that it is a resort area. I'm going to cut short what I plan to say, but it's all printed there. You've heard our stories. Our communities are no longer a family that bought a vacation cottage and loaned it out or rented it out to a friend. These are businesses. The homes, STRs, are no longer landed, available for rent or purchase, impacting the housing crisis. Hoodland renters have been turned out onto the streets when their lease is up, unable to find replacement housing while their employment is on the mountain. The next problem, businesses cannot find staff, as experienced staff is forced to relocate. Services such as fire and police are overtaxed, as overcrowded houses need their services on weekends when the local population swells. The more homes that become STRs, the fewer families live in the community, resulting in a decreased enrollment in our school. The fewer students, the lesser funding from the state. The lesser funding is heading towards the possibility of Hoodland losing its school. The lack of school decreases the value of our property and places a hardship on families with children. Consider the facts that hotels, motels, B&Bs, condo communities, resort communities, all have onsite management. STRs do not. Renters are handed a key, given a list of instructions, and told to have funds. There is no way, as it stands now, to put a brake on parties that get out of hand. I have a house that advertises Sleep 22, available for weddings. Next house, next to me, advertises Sleep 16, great for family reunions. We had a weekend just a short while ago where there was a wedding with over 100 people in one house, 50 people in the house adjacent to us for a birthday. All, people from all over, California, Washington, Idaho. Do you know what that did to a little, tiny, tiny street? We've had times, the fire department, the EMTs have had to hike up because they can't get to it. These are businesses.
Please conclude.
I provided Gary with a thumb drive that lists-
Fran, please conclude your comments.
Okay. Real quick, I am sending Gary the study by U of O on short-term rentals and questionnaires that have to be addressed by communities in Oregon. Gary has the thumb drive. Over 2,000 homes on the mountain are non-resident owners. There is a solution.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much, we understand.
In the pocket is a solution. On the final page, please read it, it's effective, it's been used by counties and cities all around Oregon.
We have your information, we will look at it. Thank you very much for coming today. Okay, up next, Kate O'Halloran. Please introduce yourself, state your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here, I appreciate it. And thank you to those who responded to the letter that I sent you last week. My name is Catherine O'Halloran, and I live in the Welchess area. I've lived up there over 20 years. When you say that $800 is exorbitant, I just have to chuckle. I'm a small business owner, I pay taxes and fees to Clackamas County, Washington County, Multnomah County, the city of Portland, Trimester Taxes. Eight hundred is nothing to a second homeowner, absolutely nothing. We have to pay $500 to get our, each home in Timberline Rim to get our mailboxes fixed. Five hundred bucks. And you're saying $800 is exorbitant for a second homeowner who makes that much maybe in one night's rent, maybe in a weekend's rent? Well, some of them do, Tootie Smith. I saw you roll your eyes. It's a sign of disdain, and I don't appreciate it.
I was, I did not roll my eyes, I'm just questioning, but I'm gonna allow you the ample opportunity to continue.
Thank you. And $800 is not, it's in your opinion exorbitant, not in mine. I'm a small business owner, I'm a busy lady, I don't have time to be here today, but I care deeply about this issue. How many of you are short-term homeowners, renters? None of you?
Renters?
How many of you own short-term rental homes?
I do not.
I don't.
Nor do I.
Okay, that's good.
Oh.
I guess you, my money ran out on you.
Yeah. How many of you have-
Just a moment, please. I didn't realize, madam and sir, would you please take a seat? It's for fire code reasons, so, sir, would you please sit down?
Physically, yes.
Okay, yeah, because you're leaning up against the lights, and thank you very much. Kate, go ahead.
Okay. How many of you have wildlife in your neighborhood? Bears?
Lots of them.
Bears? Okay. How many of you have short-term rentals, leave-out trash every weekend, and now have problem bears on your street four doors down? I do, and many of us do. So the trash is a huge issue, and I'll conclude with another issue that terrifies me, and that is fire. We live up there, the locals, we take our fire bans extremely seriously. We could lose our homes, lives, livelihood, and you all know what fires have done in our state and others. It's horrifying. Yet, people come up there and they think they're in Smoreville, they think they're entitled to roast weenies, hot dogs, burgers over fire because they're up in the woods. It takes one match, it takes one ember, one. When I was a small child in 1964, an ember blew over an acre, landed on our home and burned our house to the ground. I'll never forget the look on my parents' faces, seven kids, no home, their dreams, up in smoke. You guys need to take this seriously. $800 is not exorbitant. You have a way to do it. Do it. Don't kick this can further down the road. You're this close, let's take care of this. Don't push this away again. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
I understand the sentiment of the folks in the room, but we have also received emails from folks who own some of these, who live up here part-time, who rent it out occasionally, maybe once a month. There is, I understand, a lot of absentee owners up there, but they're privately owned, and many of them don't intend on renting them out, as you see. So I know that you folks, most, and Kate, I appreciate your comments on that, I was not being disrespectful, but I too, and I'm getting personal emails, on my personal emails saying, hey, you know, I come up here, yeah, I may live in Portland, or I may live in some other part, I come up and I spend most of the time out here, I rent it occasionally. Those people are not the problems. We understand that very much. Okay. I just want to have a point of clarification on that. Next up, Jonathan Terry. Please come up, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. I deeply appreciate all of your time. My name's Jonathan Terry. I live in Rhododendron, Oregon. I've been part of the Mount Hood community for over 20 years. I cannot express how disappointed I am to see years' worth of community involvement, all of your time, all of the money spent creating this process, just to flush it down the toilet. I manage a small rental shop. I hire 20 to 30 people a year, low-level management. There's a lot of us up in the Mount Hood community area. I lose 50% of my applicants because they can't find a house. I have somebody, this year, he lived in his car for five months while actively looking for a place to live and rent, through the snow. I mean, it's not easy. And this is not a one-off example. This is life for us up there. There is no such thing as a long-term rental anymore. They don't exist. They've been priced out. My house that I bought six years ago has doubled in value, and that's not a benefit to me. I pay more taxes because of that. But I can't sell my home and buy a new one, all the other houses are doubled in value as well. We're in a point where our community will not be able to support the businesses that are there and have been supporting our entire state and community for years. I don't know what else we can do. I try and hire 20 to 30 people a year, and the same goes for everybody, whether it's Meadows Ski Bowl, Mount Hood, Oregon Resort, every other single small business in our community that needs to hire people. How do we hire people when there are currently in four zip codes, three rentals available? There's one studio rental available for $800 with no kitchen. There is one two-bedroom apartment available for $1,200 with no kitchen, and there is one condo, two-bedroom condo available for $2,000. You tell me how hundreds upon hundreds of employment opportunities, people who want to come to our area and live and work, but can't find the job and leave with their tails between their legs after two months of living in their car and searching for a place to live? How are we going to continue as a community with those standards? I want to find three rentals for all of the needs of our community in our area, but I can search up on Airbnb, and I can find 626 available properties. It's at a breaking point, and if you, I mean, I understand that the Mount Hood community is a small community when it comes to Clackamas County as a whole. We are not, we're not the biggest part of your community, but I believe we are an important part. We serve the entire state. Timberline as a whole brings people from across the world.
Thank you very much, sir. You are Jonathan? Please, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Of course you all are important, we are not minimizing the importance of any person or their opinions. You said you were a business owner?
No, I'm a small-level management position. At Timberline, I do not represent them.
I thought you said you hired people.
I hire people, so I hire people for my department.
At Timberline?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you very much. Up next, I hope this, I'm pronouncing this name right, is it Deborah Hines? Hines?
Hines.
Please come forward, ma'am, and state your area of residence, your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Deborah Hines, from Welchess, resident as of 2017. So I'm living in Portland, you know, prior 27 years. Love the area, love the community, love everything. You've heard all these issues. These issues really have come into play the last five years. It has been intense. I don't need to review all the issues, I don't need to review all these issues for you. You obviously have heard and know what they are. I really want you to consider having a proactive thought for moving forward and not just, again, allowing things to kind of go off to the wayside with the STR issue. Nationwide, these issues have been huge and are destroying communities left and right. Our businesses are truly being affected by all of these facts that no employees, we really do have short, you know, you go to Subway and the line is out the door because there's one person in Subway trying to serve everybody who comes up this road, things like that. I mean, it is intense. So I want you to understand, and maybe consider in your solutions, something that Portland has done with their STR issues, and that is require people who own STRs to actually live in that house for a certain amount of months out of the year. I think Portland's is nine months out of the year, which is quite a bit. So putting an issue like that forward and saying, you know, maybe we need to start, you know, asking people to do that. I think all the other residents here have really taken care of the rest of the point, so that's pretty much what I have. So thank you for listening.
Deborah, thank you for your kind words and suggestions on that, very much. I don't have any cards at the moment, it doesn't mean that somebody else can't fill one out, just want to be clear on that. Tony, we have some folks signed up on our virtual site on Zoom, and who are those? Would you want to start with the first one?
Madam Chair, I will start with Richard Harris. Mr. Harris, sir, please state your name and area of residence, you will have three Mr. Richard Harris, you're currently muted.
Okay, do you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hello? Okay, do you actually see anything? Because I thought maybe you saw on video what I was doing here.
No, sir, we do not have video turned on for public testimony.
Okay, that hurts. I practiced this three-minute thing for like a whole week. Okay, so I'm on, I'm on the road, or it's actually an easement driveway that we share with five other houses. And I just want, since I've heard this testimony, I didn't know people were having this sort of trouble. We have one resident that was allowed to open up an Airbnb, even though all the letters that we get from the county consistently say that Airbnbs in rural Clackamas County are not allowed. And we live in Redland. We live on a very small easement road that's gravel and that we shared together. We have a properties next door to my property that actually has split their house up into different portions so they can rent out more than one part of their house. And they've created a driveway which aims into my house when the lights come in, where people drive down this road at one o'clock in the morning, not necessarily knowing how this road works because it's pretty tiny, showing up and doing what people do, getting out of cars, slamming doors and starting alarms. And what we have here is we have an individual who has been allowed to create a nuisance for everybody living here. One person has decided that they're going to do this without ever telling any of us and the county never telling any of us, when all of us have been under the, I guess, mistaken idea that anything being done on this easement road would need a conditional use permit. And every time I would go into the county and I asked them, what about the conditional use permit? They looked at me like I wasn't even speaking English because it took me a long time to figure out, in fact, there are no rules. Although you send people out here to look at this place and say it's good for whatever it is, we down here are stuck. And so, I had expected you guys to do something that is really important to keep us safe, which is not happening here. We have little children living on this road that no longer take the garbage up to gravel because they're afraid that these cars coming down won't see them. That's bad and not safe. Plus, you're supposed to keep our property values at the highest possible. You're not doing that. In fact, they're not even hearing this in the discussion, which is quite concerning. So, what we have decided to do as a group of small easement dwellers is we're going to stop it ourselves. And we have signs now going up and down this road telling people that we're not happy that they're here. I've brought the signs into the county to make sure I'm not getting sued by anybody so that we can all have these, and we're doing this. And we started putting them up last week. We're going to try to shut it down ourselves, but I think you guys need to do this and look at this. When you have a neighbor who is able to split this up into different rentals and have this going, by the way, they have it fully booked for the whole summer. There's going to be an extra 500 trips a month down our gravel road. This road will never withstand that sort of traffic, and yet, nobody's doing anything, and you're leaving it up to us, which I think is horrible, that you're leaving the citizens to have to come and stop something to protect their houses and their property and their children. And that needs to be something thought of because this is dangerous stuff, besides people not even living and owning stuff in different countries. It's a problem, and I would appreciate if you guys would truly look at adding conditional use because all the other counties are doing that, and out in a place like this in rural Clackamas County.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Thank you. Where do you live? You never stated your area. Was it Redland?
Redland, 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 yeah.
Redland, on Redland Road or off?
No, off of Redland Road.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
Thanks a lot.
You bet, and thank you for your opinions today. Tony, who's up next?
Madam Chair, my next testimony will be from William Frank. Sir, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Hello, my name's William Frank, and I have COVID. So, I stayed home in Welch's, where I've lived since the 70s. I live on a quiet dead-end street along the Salmon River. The house has been here since 1920 and was originally, and perhaps ironically, an inn that was built to house summertime vacationers from Portland. You could stay here for a dollar and a quarter a night or three bucks a day, including meals. Some areas in the so-called villages from Brightwood through Welch's to Rhododendron were intentionally developed as vacation neighborhoods. Mount Air Park, for instance, in Wildwood, was platted back in the 1930s with small lots, seemingly for summer cabins. I know because one of them was my first home. I was 30. I could barely afford it after working for four years at my first real job in the schools. Similar places housed local restaurant workers, gas station mechanics, resort workers, occasional ski bums and artists. Other Mount Hood neighborhoods have been developed to support the local recreational residential economy. Twinberry Loop, for instance, was built in the 90s. I moved there when our family started to grow. These single-family residences and duplexes housed local teachers, bank employees, restaurant owners, Forest Service employees, plumbers, electricians, realtors, and a few retirees. Both of our little boys went to daycare at the Dormant Center, played soccer on the ball field, and graduated from Welch's Middle School. I gladly commuted to Oregon City every day in order to come home to this beautiful mountain community. Then there's Timberline Rim, our favorite place to trick or treat because there were lots of families over there. It was developed during the 70s mostly. If you wanted a neighborhood environment in the mountains with a swimming pool and moderately priced homes, this was a choice for a lot of people. And Rippling River came in the 80s mostly. There were higher-end homes filled with professionals, retirees, second-family homes, golf fanatics living the life, and some families, too. The Active Homeowner Association made sure houses were painted acceptable colors and abandoned vehicles were not allowed to mess up the character of the neighborhood. Seems some regulation had been beneficial in maintaining the character of that neighborhood, but it's precisely the character of these neighborhoods that is being affected by the unmanaged free-for-all that short-term rentals have brought. We don't know who our neighbors are anymore, and the deterioration of this community's fabric is largely impacted, in my mind, by three things. One, the transitory nature of short-term visitors. Two, the resulting dearth of affordable starter homes. Three, the absence of locally-oriented decision-making or forward-thinking leadership and guidance. Let me finish by saying, a great amount of work over the past three years has already been done by this board and its staff with input from the area's residents in developing guidance for short-term rentals. Please do not throw the baby out with the bathwater just because you haven't figured out a way to pay for the, for part of this work. You're smart enough, and you are so very close. If you want a set of charming villages.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Your three minutes are up. Please conclude.
Can I have one state, one sentence?
Yes.
If you want a set of charming villages to accompany a majestic mountain, leave room for people to live here, not just visit.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Tony, who's next?
Madam Chair, the next speaker will be Barbara Smith. Ma'am, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
I'm Barbara Smith, and I live in Rhododendron. I'm a homeowner, full-time resident, and registered voter. I have been following this, the county's route of trying to address this short-term rentals for three years. And it's amazing to me that, given that length of process, we basically have come back to, or trying to come back, it appears, to being nowhere. The strategic business plan that the commission has in effect calls for building public trust through good government. I, I find it hard, as much as I respect and appreciate the service of the county commissioners, I just don't see that strategic goal having a lot of efficacy when it comes to the short-term rental problems that, that people who live here locally are experiencing. We have, you know, there's basic things that everyone expects government to do, basic roads, of course, basic health and safety, and simple things like parking for businesses. You wouldn't let a business open that would serve large numbers of people and provide no parking. And yet, the short-term rental owners and investors, who are typically not from this area, they're not required to provide any parking, and people are allowed to use neighbors' driveways, neighbors block the streets. Someone spoke earlier about an easement, and on my street, we have a road that is privately maintained by the people who live on the street. We pay every year for gravel to be put in, to be graded. That's an expense to us as homeowners. The county bears none of that cost, and yet, when, and the street above me, it's the same situation, and yet, there can be sometimes large numbers of short-term renters who come in and use those roads and that, that, that local homeowners pay for, and they don't, those owners may or may not even be willing to participate in the main, the cost for the maintain, for maintaining the roads. So, I'm at a loss to.
Please finish. Your time is up, ma'am. Please finish.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tony, what's next?
Madam Chair, the next speaker will be Donna, Donna Rogers, apologies. Ma'am, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
I'm sorry, hold on. I, I'm trying to get the volume back here.
We can hear you, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Donna, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I am Donna Rogers, and I live next to the lodge and the facilities in Timberline Rim. And I have done a survey of my community. We have, as of today, the best I can guess, approximately 50 STRs in our community, and I would like to say that, yes, these are businesses. I know it personally. I walk it every day. So, what I know is that there are many, there are several owners that are not a company. And yes, they are good neighbors. They are good neighbors. The rest of them, I mentioned that I live right next door to the lodge and the facilities, which has a pool and a tennis court. And when I bought my home, we, the whole community played here. We had potlucks, we have 4th of July parade, we have this beautiful pool, and we, as members and homeowners, it was frequented and loved, and it got 100% every year. So, why I'm involved in this, besides the impact of those facilities being used by people that are not members, I have an experience to share that I wasn't going to speak today because I have been told by my community that I cannot speak a letter from an attorney. So, what I will say today is, on Saturday, there was a party across the street. It says 10 people can sleep in that house, and I have three vacation rentals directly across the street, and the one across the street says 10, but it's often a party house. It advertises four bedrooms and three bathrooms, or actually five, only has four, and it has a wraparound deck on the river. So, on Saturday night, seven vehicles parked in the lodge, parking lot, four of them parked on the grass at the tennis courts, and four of them parked in the driveway. And they partied all night, a few stayed, and how would I say? The impact to our community, thank you, John and Kate, is that we have, this is a revolving door. There were 15 cars, two nights. So, the rest of my neighbors that are the services, so I'll go back quickly. I am also Forest Service and a reserve firefighter in my career. So, how I got involved with the STRs is they were having fireworks and fires, in burn ban. I made it a goal to help my community be firewise. I have passed out firewise things. So, these visitors, for example, across the street, I went across the street and told them there was a firebrand, bought a shovel and a bucket, and talked to them. And what I told them was, you know, you, he says, oh, we didn't know, we don't live here. Nothing in the vacation rental to tell them. No email, nothing. So, they have an excuse, right? Well, they didn't stop, and so they continued, and they shoot. They shoot off the deck across the Sandy River.
A man, please wrap up your comments. Yeah. Donna, please wrap up your comments.
I'm sorry, are you closing me?
Wrap up your comments.
So, let me finish with one thing. Yes, please, please, continue. I like Paul's idea that we, we push this repeal out until we have a document in place that can replace it and do it at the same time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Tony, well, who's next?
Madam Chair, the next speaker will be Brett Fisher. Mr. Fisher, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Hi, Commissioners, my name is Brett Fisher. I live and own a home in Welch's, but the purpose of my comments today are in regards to Government Camp. I am Vice Chair of the Government Camp CPO. I'm a Board Member of the Government Camp Sanitary District, and I also manage about 200 condos in homeowners associations in Government Camp. I have to say, as a resident of Welch's, I agree with a lot of the comments regarding lower mountain. Part of some of the businesses I oversee is maintaining vacation rentals within the condominiums that I was Vice President of when we developed them. We built into the bylaws of these associations rules and regulations that a lot of what you guys are trying to accomplish is already built into the association's rules and regulations. So, my comment is, is more of a question when you look at the policies you're trying to set. The condominiums, specifically in Collins Lake Resort, are considered STRs, and unlike the single-family residents in the Welch's area, they were developed for the resort atmosphere. A lot of them are vacation rentals. We manage about half of the units as vacation rentals, and I just want that to be considered in the policies that you're setting forth to make sure density and things like that of residents such as Collins Lake Resort are not forgotten, because, again, those were developed, and as, as part of the development team, we did that, and Government Camp in general is a resort community where a lot of these rentals take place. I want to be careful, I'm not speaking for the CPO. I'm not speaking for residents in the neighborhoods in Government Camp, more specifically about Collins Lake Resort and the Grand Lodges, which, again, is 200 condominiums right in the heart of Government Camp. I just ask that those be considered or possibly separated from the conversation somehow because it's really a different entity. It's a lot like a hotel in operations where we have check-in, we have security, we have enforcement, we have trash, we have parking. All of these are already managed within the resort. So, that's all. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Tony, who's next?
Madam Chair, next will be Dennis Tilka. Sir, please state your name and area of residence. I will unmute you momentarily. There we go. Sir, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
My name is Dennis Tilka. I live in the Welch's area, and I've lived here for 50 years. I'm concerned about, when you say the fee is $800 is exorbitant, was it 800 or 900? I don't remember what you said, but I just wanted to point out that people who can afford to buy a house for 1.1 million dollars, 800,000, 700,000, 400,000, that I don't see, for, and turn them into a STR, they would consider 800 to be exorbitant. But another thing I'd want to point out is, I sent a letter to you, and I pointed out that there should be three kinds of STRs. One kind is for people who live there, reside there, and they're, have very little impact on the neighborhood, and their fee could be a lot less than the 800. And that person that testified before me that talked about areas that were built around Rippling River or Government Camp, Collins Lake, where they have active managers on-site, those aren't impacting our neighborhoods either. It's the, it's the STRs that are single-family dwellings that don't have an active management, and there is no resident that lives there. and there is no resident that lives there. Those are the ones that need to be strictly regulated. And I would encourage, actually, I would encourage prohibiting those unless you can really come up with some stringent regulations where minimum lot sizes, just because of the impact of the neighborhood. I would point out that under your zoning ordinances, there's something called a bed and breakfast. And there's something called a bed and breakfast homestays. Now, you charge for a bed and breakfast, you'd need a conditional use permit. For a bed and breakfast homestay, you would need a a home occupation permit. And an STR, you need no permits. And that's why I've actually appealed your zoning ordinances or helped to appeal it because there's no regulation. And I think that's wrong. It's completely wrong. You're just advocating your responsibility to anything, you kind of act like, well, if I don't see it, nothing will happen. And as for code enforcement, the county is closed Friday, Saturday and Sunday, so what is code enforcement going to do about it? That's just bizarre too. And you're just overwhelming the community with this. And I pointed out that I sent a census data for two thousand and ten where it showed how many vacant homes there are in here. But the two thousand and twenty hasn't been done yet, but I've looked at on the internet just other communities and it's not uncommon to have fifty percent of your homes actively as STRs in resort areas like ours, like for ski areas or beach areas. And if you want to do something about homelessness, I don't know, maybe you should start setting up tents for our workers up here and have these homeless villages.
Thank you very much, please, um, wrap it up, Mr. Tilka.
Okay, I'm done.
All right, thank you very much for your time. Tony, who's next?
Madam Chair, at this time, I do not have any other registered testimony. If there is anyone who would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature.
All right, I have another blue card. Catherine Dipmore, are you here? Please come forward ma'am, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Dipmore, I live in Hillsborough, but I have a vacation.
Please speak up.
I have a vacation rental at Golden Poles Condominiums in Government Camp.
Oh, okay.
And like the, I think the last, well, Brett Fisher and the other one talking about the um, the association, the rentals and the associations, um, we are really self-managed. I and the other owners that rent out our homes, um, within our HOAs, we have guidelines addressing the negative issues that the other homeowners have been talking about in their neighborhoods. We have security, we have limited parking, we have, um, you know, set numbers of guests. My rental can only have six. So those things are already covered. So I think the idea of having different types of vacation rentals, as was suggested, I I think that's a great idea. And then for the overloaded our services, we're seeing that all over. With a shortage of workers and unavailability of housing, that's not just at the mountain, that's pretty much across the board. And the reason that I, as a homeowner, would not do a long-term rental is because of the rental laws in our state. It's it's just way too risky to have a long-term rental because if you get a bad renter in, you cannot get them out. It's like, they own your house, they can do anything they want to it. So it's really another, there's another whole layer here when when people are complaining about the short-term rentals, it's like as a property owner, um, it's like in my situation, our rental was a family vacation home for like forty-five years. My husband passed away in two thousand and twenty and I began renting it out so that I can keep it for my kids until they can take over. So an eight hundred dollar fee for me would be a real hardship to be able to hold on to it for them, for future generations. So there are just many different levels and I I agree that the, it's a very good idea to have different types as suggested. So thank you so much.
Thank you for coming forward. We're going to continue on, I'm going to, is there anybody else, first of all? Well, I'm going to close the public hearing on this particular issue and the board will have some converse.
I think Tony's trying to get your attention, there's two other people online.
Madam Chair, I do have additional.
Oh, that's news to me.
Apologies, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
First will be Sarah Roberson. Ma'am, please state your name and area of residence, you will have three minutes.
My name is Sarah Roberson. I live in Brightwood in Timberline Rim Division Five, which is a small pocket of the HOA that we live in.
Um, Sarah?
Yes?
I'm interrupting because we're having trouble hearing. Can you speak directly into your microphone or whatever device you're using?
Okay, can you hear me better now?
Yes, that's better, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And you live where? We're going to start over the clock, where do you live again?
I live in Brightwood in Timberline Rim Division Five.
Thank you very much.
That's a small pocket of the Timberline Rim HOA. I don't know if any of you have had, ever had a school bus pull up at night with over fifty people get off of it. They rented a three-bedroom home a few houses down from me. That's a lot of people to put in our neighborhood all at once. We have regular occurrences of people renting HO, or renting STRs out here. And as you know, in a homeowners association like Timberline Rim, we own the pathways that go down to the river and so forth. We pay a groundskeeper to keep those up nice and neat and we all enjoy it. And the short-term rental people also use those pathways, sometimes late at night, sometimes with parties and so forth. So we've been impacted, we we don't have a community like we used to because of STRs. I do realize that we also have people who own STRs who are local, who do a really good job. Last week or so, I received a postcard in the mail from someone saying that they were a family who wanted to buy a house in the Timberline Rim area. And so I decided to call this person. This person eventually stated that she owns a group of, she owns a business where they are purchasing on Mount Hood strictly for STRs. This person is not a realtor or or anything. So these, these are, there are companies that are coming in and purchasing all of these up. Eight hundred dollars is nothing. It is nothing. You're, if you don't charge that, you're letting these people who buy multiple homes for STRs get away with this. And they need to have that fee. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Tony, who else?
Madam Chair, I have one additional individual, Sue Ellen White. Ma'am, please state your name and area of residence, you will have three minutes.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Sue Ellen White, I'm a fourth-generation Oregonian and I now live in Port Orchard, Washington. My family came to the mountain in the nineteen twenties. My grandfather was connected with, he was a city official. And I grew up along with my brother in our cabin, which was the second cabin we had in Welch's, and spent my entire, all of our family vacations, our friends, our, rest of our family came up and we enjoyed the enormous benefits of growing up close to nature. And I have, I have benefited greatly from that and used those lessons to much better my community and the environment. And in the nineteen, early nineteen sixties, my grandmother died and then my grandfather got diabetes and both my father and my uncle had to go give him his injections twice a day and work. And there was the cabin, which required a lot of work, you know, the snow needed to be shoveled off the the roof in the winter and the water needed to be turned off. And so they sold it. And my brother and I were in college and we didn't think about it then because we were young. And later years, I came to deeply regret their decision to sell it because I'm so very connected to to the Northwest and to that environment and to the place where, you know, my drawings were on the wall, as a little kid with a pencil and got in trouble. But the drawings remain. And so in the last couple of years, I had the opportunity to repurchase this. It was a huge decision and the place was not being maintained at all. And it's a historic cabin. And so I bought it back and we are working on on repairing it and making it an asset to the neighborhood rather than an eyesore. And so I have had rentals in Portland from family homes. I have been an Airbnb owner since the early days Airbnb in the eighties and on our property on Whidby Island. And and so the only way that we can keep this and pass this on to our family in a family trust is if it can pay for itself. Now, how should that do that? Well, the state of Oregon passed the long-term rental rules, which if you haven't rented, you will be surprised at how few rights you have. So renting it long-term and then saying, you know, we want to be there time sometime will not be really feasible. Landlords really have no rights, no matter how good and how responsible you are. So I do understand that there are, there are problems, clearly. I come from Whidby Island, which has a similar problem, only there's no place for people to commute who can't find a rental. It's an island. And I'll tell you that the short-term rental regulations are not going to solve homelessness. They're not going to solve your your long-term rental problems. Those won't be solved by regulating short-term rentals because people will do other things and corporations will buy them. And and so it's, it's not always the answer. And you don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater in terms of the amount of support economically that visitors bring. So I would just caution you to think about it and maybe think about people like me who have a deep connection but can't live there and are actually very responsible and caring people about the community and about the property.
Thank you, thank you ma'am, I appreciate it. Tony, is there anybody else?
Madam Chair, at this time, I do not have any other new speakers registered to testify at this time.
Thank you very much. I am now going to close the public testimony portion of this meeting. And I have a few comments I want to make before, I'm sure all the commissioners need to say something. It appears to me that from, and I've listened carefully to everyone's testimony, it's very clear that one shoe does not fit all, all, all situations out there. There are some problems, obviously, in some of these areas. Sounds like the rental homes have been allowed in this area since the beginning of recreation. And maybe that's how many of these homes were first established, you know, that's a, that is a constitutional property right, that that homes be allowed for recreation use. And to say that we cannot allow that use is not something that I personally am interested. I don't think the board wants to do the, do away with that either. We've heard from a gentleman, condo condominiums in the area around Lake Collins that are considered short-term rentals, there's, some of them are long-terms. That wasn't allowed use by government many years ago, who don't have some of the problems that some of you folks are experiencing with neighbors who might be taking advantage of the situations. It's obvious to me, based on what's in front of us today, that many revisions need to be made. And some of these revisions that I'm particularly interested in, possibility is, it's going to take some data. For instance, we have a group of folks, we have people who own condominiums. Okay, that's a different subset, I believe, than people who are in some of these neighborhoods where there's a driveway that services five different homes. I think that's a different consideration. Also, ownership is a consideration to me as I'm listening to this. I've made some notes, I have lots of notes here on lots of different pieces of paper. And limiting the regulation to maybe these companies that have owned multiple units that don't have onsite management. And I think we also need to consider a single ownership. To me, the companies that are coming in who are buying up these and are not regulating them is a very different type of owner who owns one of these homes, who manages it. And that is where the eight hundred fee does become onerous. You cannot say that, oh, they're making a ton of money on this and the eight hundred fee doesn't matter. I'm here to say it does. I've also heard about the, the labor shortage that's causing this. The labor shortage is all over the state of Oregon, all over the state of Oregon. We've also heard about housing shortages, we can't find any long-term rentals. That is all over the state of Oregon, it is all over Clackamas County. It comes from my community, I live outside of Mawala. The same situations are happening in Mawala that are happening to a lot of these folks here and it's not because of short-term rentals. It is the state of the economy that we're in that I do think we need to consider. I also like to consider we're coming out of the pandemic and many of those factors are playing into this. I'm not saying that we're going to throw the baby out with the path water. I do think that, Gary, I don't know how we get here on this, but I think a lot more time and consideration needs to be taken into this of situations that, so this board started this three years ago, I wasn't even here then. And for some reason, the previous board couldn't make a decision on this. So they punted it and they punted it and punted it. So when this was established, three years ago, some of the issues that are here today weren't even considered. For instance, single ownership, multi, multi-million dollar corporations coming in and buying. I don't think that was around in nineteen, two thousand and eighteen or two thousand and nineteen. So it is extremely complicated issue that is going to take a lot, some time and consideration for staff. And when we say that, a caller said, oh, you're smart, you can figure out how to get the money, well, um, it's, we're coming into folks, a time where maybe we're looking at some economic difficulties on the horizon. I know you all feel that, you're business owners, you're property owners, many of you are on fixed incomes. You see a declining stock market, you see rising interest rates and you see a recession possibly looming if we're not in one already. So when we look at it as a board, we consider all those situations too. But no, we're not here to discount anything that commissioners have said. I'm going to call on some of my commissioners, the ones who haven't spoken, and then we'll continue on down the line. Commissioner Shaw.
Yes. Good morning and thank you all for coming and making your comments today, it's been very helpful, it's been very illuminating. Some comments on what we've heard today, excuse me. First of all, if we repeal the existing short-term rental one, eight point one zero today, it's not going to really make any difference because it's not funded on one July, we wouldn't be able to enforce it anyway. And any legislation that's not enforceable is bad legislation. Could we modify short-term rental code by one July? No, we're going to need some more time on that. If, again, if we were to enforce eight point one zero on one July, it's really not going to make any difference, it's not going to solve any problems that we've heard today. For example, in eight point one zero, there's no limit on the number of guests in STR, there's no restrictions or information in there about if a owner of a STR There's no restrictions or information in there about if a owner of STR has to be onsite, live there at some portion of the year. There's nothing there on that. Again, nothing on parking. So it looks to me like what, this is a serious matter, and I agree that time is not on our side. This needs to be fixed. It looks to me like what needs to happen today is that the current Chapter 8.10, short-term rentals in the county code, needs to be repealed. And I'm hoping that the commission, well, again, sir, if it's repealed, until we can, we can't have it on the books, we cannot have it on the books and create a new effective code based on what we've heard today. We can't have both. So I'm hoping what we can do is repeal this code and get hot in the next, I want to throw out the next couple of months before summer starts, a new code based on all of these things we've heard today that are not contained and addressed in the current code. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw, Commissioner Schrader, and then Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, my question is for Nate and for our administrator here. So this is pretty much a procedural piece, is it not? Is it, this is a procedural piece? And that is based on, and Commissioner Savas was good enough to provide us with this information, but for one thing, I haven't really, I just got it yesterday. So my concern is that procedurally, we have been advised that if we repeal this one, then we can use that as a template and integrate some of these other ideas into it and manage it. Is that a fair statement to make? That it's a cleaner, much more structured way to move forward?
We're going to have our county council answer that, Martha. Is that okay?
Yeah, because we do want to do something. I mean, we've got to come up with some solutions. So why don't you answer Nate and then I'll say some other questions.
So the question directly before you today is on the repeal.
Okay.
And the procedure would be if you proceed to second reading, that would be the process to repeal what is currently on the books. What I'm hearing is that there may be interest in either amending
Yeah.
the framework of what has already been adopted or to adopt some new short-term rental regulation. Either way, that requires a first and second reading in and of itself.
So I'm seeing this not as saying we're going to throw this, the baby out with the bathwater. We're just looking at procedural issue in order to incorporate some of these additional ideas into the framework. Because I am worried right now, since we don't have a funding mechanism in place as of July 1st, as Commissioner Shaw said, even if we were to pass something right this minute, the enforcement could be up in the air. And Gary, another question. Isn't it so that we would have to beef up some areas of the Department of Transportation and Development in order to even implement this in terms of code enforcement and things of that sort?
Yes.
Could you address that?
Yes. So what I've heard is the issue is enforcement, and that costs money for not only code enforcement staff to enforce the noise and parking issues, but the sheriff's office too. The sheriff's been very upfront with you commissioners that she doesn't have the staff to cover all the needs in the county. So there'd be an increase to that office as well to cover the more, the issues that her office would undertake. So it's all about money, commissioners, how to fund this program. And Commissioner Savas has offered some ideas, but we haven't fully vetted that out yet at the staff level.
Okay. So if I knew, and I would expect that there would be a date certain if we table this today or repeal it or whatever we're saying, and revisit it with this additional information, then we can still move forward with something. And I know people are anxious. All I can say is that government can move at the pace of a snail sometimes. And I have worked on projects and things in this county that have taken over 20 years. Now, that's not going to happen here, in my opinion, but I've seen it happen in multiple areas. So my suggestion would be if we move ahead with the repeal, which I think would be a wise thing to do, based on what I'm hearing from you two folks, then we could come up with another date certain where we can discuss and fully vet some of these ideas, Commissioner, would you be amenable to that, that you have pulled forward so we can inculcate it into a revised ordinance? That's kind of where, that's, to me, is where we're going to have to split the baby. But again, I'm really worried that we will not have the money, even with an $800 bill, which I do have to admit, for me, it'd be pretty steep, quite frankly, but there you go. So I'd like to hear from other commissioners. I would be willing to move forward with this, with a repeal, if we can set a date certain to inculcate some of these other pieces of information from Commissioner Savas. The only thing I have to tell you, though, I worry a little bit about this article we were given, because this was an article written by someone who's looking for business from local governments to administer enforcement. And so as much as this may be good information in many ways, but...
Madam, please. Fran, please, you're out of order. She's not referring to your article.
No, no, no. This is a different article. This is something else.
Please sit down, madam.
I submitted that, and if you will notice, other counties in Oregon are successfully using it.
Fran, please.
We're going to have to reinvent the wheel.
Thank you, madam.
Okay, thank you, Fran. Let me explain what I'm trying to say here. The issue is that this document, not that the ideas aren't good in it or usable. The issue is it was written by someone who wants government business. And I get concerned is that we can't do anything like that because we have procedures for procurement. We have to do an RFP. We have to give multiple. So if we were going to follow, in other words, I want to make sure that we're not out here trying to hire someone external. That's all I'm trying to say with this. And that's why, not saying that the ideas aren't good or that is something that we could look at, but it's the fact that we would have to administer it if we had external administration, which would also cost us money, then we'd have to, you know, there's no guarantee who we would hire to do that. You know, we'd have to do an RFP and an official procurement process. So that's the only point I'm trying to make.
Thank you. And please do not interrupt commissioners while we're trying to sort this out. Point of clarification, code enforcement staff does indeed work on Fridays. Somebody called in and made that accusation. They do work on Fridays. So Commissioner Savas, you're up. Thank you for being patient.
Just so I can just jump out and just calm some people in the room. I think the document that Commissioner Schrader was referencing was not the document that you handed out, Fran.
No, it's a different.
It's a separate document. And I think the, and I appreciate Commissioner Schrader's point about that it was for a business trying to implement. But my point about this document is just the ideas that are contained in it, not hiring someone to provide that. So there's just some great ideas. And so maybe let the record reflect whatever it is that the document is called A Practical Guide to Effectively Regulating Short-Term Rentals on the Local Government Level. There's just some good information in here and ideas. That's all that we can perhaps incorporate, not suggesting that we hire this firm or anything else.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify because I didn't think that was anybody's intent, Commissioner Savas, but I was like, wait, we've got to be careful.
I think some folks in the audience thought you were referencing the, what Fran was already handed out.
And we were trying to make a point of clarification, Fran.
Yep. So anyhow, what I wanted to say is, first of all, I want to thank everyone for participating today and sitting in all the hearings previously and the discussions on this over the years. There's a lot of people that aren't, there's some people that are not even here today with perspectives have not even been represented from other parts of the county other than the mountain. So I guess, I won't say I'm disappointed, but I would have liked to have heard from some of those folks from around the county. Because there's unique aspects of the urban environment, and I appreciate the unique aspects of the mountain environment. One of the biggest ones, I think, is the fire risk and the late delays of the distance from law enforcement's response time. So you have some valid, unique concerns up there. But I want to say is that one thing I've learned in my 25 years of public service and before then, but really came to the forefront in these 25 years, is that people really want to enjoy and consider their homes somewhat, their own sanctuary, right? We value our neighborhoods. We want to, no one wants to have their neighborhood disrupted by any means, right? So these disruptions, if even once, once a year, is something that people remember. People want to be safe in their neighborhoods and they want to enjoy, they want to have the peaceful enjoyment of their own property. That's a basic. I think what I've learned in my 25 years is that whenever that's threatened, you have a problem. And I think, and I won't drift very, very far, but HP 2001 was somewhat an invasion of that to some degree where it almost said, you know what, residential zoning, think about those two words, residential zoning, what the word residential means, that's where people live, where people reside. Those are residential zones by design for residential use. So I would say that, for example, suggesting that we commercialize that, HP 2001, or now this, you know, STR situation, you know, you're not allowed to plant a hotel in the middle of a residential neighborhood because that's not allowed by zoning. So by, these short-term rental industries, if they concentrate a neighborhood or an area, they are de facto hotels, really, essentially. We wouldn't allow that. We wouldn't. So I just want to just make that one point. And I want to also say that it's really not one area of the county versus another area. There's a lot of different perspectives here, and I respect and hear them all. And I think that we can address them at a different time in a work session, I think, to talk about all those different aspects. And I'm trying to thread the needle in here. What I'm suggesting here were my ideas as a pilot program was not necessarily how I would like to see it, but I thought it was a way that maybe from listening to my colleagues, a balanced way to approach it that we could all get some support on to get the votes necessary, ideally five, to get this pilot program underway, learn from it, and then modify and implement some other measures that perhaps can address what we learned and what we already perhaps know. But data is important. I think the year or two-year pilot program would give us more data. So that said, the other thing I want to say very clearly, I think is clear here, that doing nothing, in my opinion, my own opinion, is not an option. We need to do something. And I, so Commissioner Schrader, with your, you asked me a question in your, when you were speaking last, and my, I said earlier, I'll say it again, my recommendation is that the optics of repealing it and then doing something afterwards, the optics of that are going to be upsetting for a lot of people.
I know.
And so I don't think it's necessary because I think the way we could do this simply is to avoid that and avoid any disruption and misunderstanding because there's a lot of people that are not here today that are going to receive that and say, oh, they just threw it out the window. And I don't know how, we have no control over how people are going to perceive what they hear or what they read. So my suggestion, like I did mention earlier, and this is also Mr. Madcor's suggestion, was have the second hearing, put it off or set a date certain, six weeks from now. If we choose to move it, we can move it, but set the second hearing for six weeks or so from now and give us time and staff time to put together a package that addresses some of this stuff that might, if there is support for the proposal and some of these ideas, incorporate that. And if we need seven weeks, we can push it out another week if necessary. But Mr. Madcor laid that out as an option, and I think that would be the middle ground that I'd be comfortable with. So I don't know what that date would be, but in order to make a motion to do such, what would that date be?
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
I have just a question.
It'd be after Labor Day, Commissioner, with the board recess. It'd be after Labor Day, early September.
Yeah. And I will say there's, I feel like there's been new information presented from a whole host of people. We have two more commissioners that really need to speak, so I want to give them ample opportunity. And we've heard from one small sector of the county, and this county has 1.3 million acres. Just letting you folks know. Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Thank you, Chair Smith. So I just want to correct some misinformation that's been stated. I'm looking at the ordinance, and there are many regulations that were passed and are in this ordinance that is being repealed. There's a whole section of definitions, and then it goes down and it talks about the registration requirements. It then talks about what are the standards and conditions? What is a dwelling unit? What is the maximum overnight occupancy? What is the noise requirement? What is the parking? What is the garbage? What is the registration identification? Building and fire safety? The list goes on and on. This commission listened to these communities across Clackamas County and thread the needle on these regulations. One of the most important regulations is that for short-term rentals within the urban growth boundary, those must be owner occupied, meaning that the person that owns it has to live there for more than half of the year. That was a critical, critical piece. These regulations are good. This board as a whole has not even been briefed on all of the work that the previous commission did in threading this needle. I am not in support of repealing this ordinance, all of these regulations. I am in support of revising who pays what. I do agree that people who are retired, that may need to rent out one room to help cover their fixed income, shouldn't have to pay $800 in registration fee. I am not in support of repealing everything. I think that we can charge a fee for people that are commercializing neighborhoods. We need to create a disincentive for commercializing neighborhoods. Commissioner Savas, I appreciate you being solution-oriented and coming up with a way to look at other ways to fund, using tourism dollars, looking at potentially tiered registration fees. But this ordinance doesn't define the fees. Is that correct, Nate Boardman?
Correct.
This ordinance defines the regulations. I am not in support of repealing it. However, I welcome a policy session to look at how we're going to pay for it and really hone our expertise, our best thinking on what to do in implementation. We can, I believe we can do that separately. Is that correct, Nate?
In a policy session, yes.
Yes. So I suggest that we move, we keep this, we do not act on it and repeal it, and we move very quickly to do a policy session and look at how we're going to pay for it.
I want to make, thank you, folks. I want to make a point of clarification. In the Oregon Legislature, Ernie County Commission, one previous county commission can't dictate to a future county commission or we'd be holding to something that certainly did not pass. I just want to make that clear. I don't think we're going to go back and revisit. I think maybe 30 different policy sessions that was had on this. We are in a new era and a new time on this. We have two more commissioners, Commissioner Shaw and then Commissioner Schrader.
Yes, okay. We need to regulate this STR thing now. But again, the current, the current code we have here, 8.10, does not address the problems that we've heard today. It goes into effect 1 July. It goes into effect 1 July, excuse me. It goes into effect 1 July without funding. It's a mute thing, okay? We need, we need a new effective code to address the problems that we've heard today. The mention of it having a provision for, a requirement for owners to occupy their property part of the time, the issues here today are not on STRs in the urban growth boundary. It's in unincorporated Clackamas County. We also need to make sure that whatever we come up with, we can enforce it and it's going to be a legitimate code, not just a piece of paper that's been around for three years doing nothing. Commissioner Savas has got some proposals here that I think are good. One of the reasons is because it could be enforced without a lot of expense, taxpayers' money to, you know, make this happen. And...
And so, again, I want to see a code written and enforced and adopted by the board that is effective, not just a piece of paper that sits out there. So whatever we do in the next month or two, we need to come up with something that's going to deliver a code to the folks here in this room and across the county that's going to resolve these problems in a way that we can afford to enforce, without a huge new bureaucratic expense to the taxpayer.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
So Gary, we do not have anything in our budget as of July 1st to enforce this, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So if we pass something now, we'll be setting up false expectations that suddenly we'll be able to enforce everything that's in that code, and that's what I'm most worried about. Because we can do something that, quite frankly, makes us feel good, but if we can't enforce it and have that opportunity, where, can you, can you tell me some areas we could cut potentially to switch it to enforcement?
Not right now, but if you direct me, I'll, we'll work on something right away.
So would that potentially mean things like social services and other things that we're doing? If we had to make cuts in some of our other arenas, housing, things of that sort, some of the work we're doing and that, is that a potential outcome? That we would be cutting other essential services right now? If we get, I don't know, I kind of think, I don't want to go down that route, really. We'd have to do a supplemental budget, wouldn't we?
If you choose to use general funds to support the short-term rental program, yes, you would cut other programs that rely on general funds, the programs you just mentioned. There are other funding opportunities here, including fees or fines or transient room taxes. There's multiple options here, but the board struggled with this. If this was easy, you would have done this years ago, but it's a very big challenge.
I know, that's what I'm thinking.
I'm going to, thank you, commissioners. I'm going to make a recommendation. I would like every commissioner to take the time and put in paper, and I have some ideas that I've talked about, I've taken notes on. Every single commissioner, write down what the changes they want to see moving forward, how we can get to it equitable, quite possibly consider something down the road, but I'm also going to entertain a motion. As any commissioner would like to read a motion going forward on this?
Chair, I did have my light on, just wanted to just...
You know what, my cup is in front of that. I'm sorry, Paul, I didn't see it.
That's all right. Just one, one thing I want to make correct, or not, if there's a misunderstanding, that is that we can charge an $800 fee, let's say, an $800 fee, and essentially, I look at that as penalizing perhaps a lot of the good operators that are doing a good job.
That's right.
Right, which I think is unfair. And I come from the world of reward, really believing that you can reward good behavior and penalize those who are not behaving correctly. So I think that's why I'm more leaning on a fine-based, code enforcement-funded mechanism here. So it's not that we need to look for income, Commissioner Schrader. The income is there, and the three-strikes rule is another incentive for people to, number one, abide by the regulations. So I think we can do this low cost, and, and in a sense, low cost to the county by simplifying the registration process. There's a reduction in cost. There are some things that were presented in the implementation of this, like inspecting every residence in the county. That would cost a lot of money. Let's start with a pilot program, start threading the needle in a reasonable way and not jump into a full-blown program. That's why I really think this is the middle ground, or something like this. And I appreciate us all working together on this. I would really like to make a motion, if there is, if there's a date certain we can, that we can have the second hearing and provide that, whether that's after the holiday, that's great, but, but that's, that's a motion, Chair, that I would like to consider today.
Okay, we have another commissioner in the queue. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I understand that, Paul, that what you've been trying to do with this, again, is a procedural question at this point, because the current ordinance doesn't have these ideas in, it's not, it's not there there yet. So the procedural question, from my perspective, is do we, okay, take this one, we don't do anything with it today, but we just say, okay, we're probably going to kick the can down the road one more time, but shouldn't we go back, not pass anything that isn't complete, or just work that, but use it as a template to continue to work on it, to get those ideas in it? For me, it's about the procedure and the structure of it. And I am really worried, I agree, that the way it's structured now is, I don't know how we pay for it, so I don't want to pass anything. We don't, we can't even implement, you know, but if this, if it, if it's, if your ideas are actually going to be put in the template we already have, then that could be a way to, to enforce it and get the funding for it. But it isn't fully cooked yet. So I, I don't know, Commissioner Smith, have you got any ideas?
I do, I just said it.
Okay.
I just said I'll entertain a motion on this particular topic. If somebody wants to have a second motion on another topic and a date, I can, we can also look at that, too. Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I'm just going to explain that I will not, if we move forward with that motion, I will be a no, but because I do not believe that repealing the ordinance is the answer, I do believe that figuring out a way to pay for the regulations are in order. And within that, this board being fully briefed on what the regulations were that were approved by the prior board, I think is important and even beginning place for this discussion. So I would propose a policy session as soon as possible to educate us as a whole body and moving forward in that way. But I will be a no vote on any motion. I just want to make that clear, if anybody is so inclined to second the motion to repeal the regulations, I will be a no vote.
Okay. There's some ideas coming forward, and Commissioner Savas, please be brief.
Yeah, yeah, well, I just think that Commissioner Fisher's earlier comments about some of the components that are in there today, I think are valuable to retain. So I think there's more in there that is of value than there is things that we need to tweak. So I think a majority of it's good. So I, I agree with Commissioner Fisher's position on the substance of the ordinance that a lot of it that she listed is of value. So we shouldn't just repeal and throw it out, out the window, because one or two, three, one, two, or three things in there are, are not acceptable. So there's too, there's too much work there to be, to be just dismissed.
Okay, go ahead.
I may support a motion, I just wanted to say, I may support a motion that extends the opportunity and includes a work session as well.
I've had some ideas from commissioners come out. We can always move to table, not make a decision on this, but I don't think that is viable because then the ordinance takes effect July 1st without any teeth in it to enforce it, and then you folks are going to come back at us, even though you sat through this hearing and listened to me, oh, you're not doing your job, you're not, well, folks, we are doing our jobs. This is very difficult. Like I said, if this, and like Gary said, if this was so easy, the prior board would have made the decisions on this and not leave it for the present board to do. There's also another option is to keep the ordinance as is and change the implementation date until 2023, work on some changes and some additions. We could push the implementation date in the past by board order, could be approved on consent agenda, would still recommend a repeal but delay implementation. You know, all these things are kind of confusing and messy. As it stands now, I am not ready to pass what is currently on the books. It needs to be reworked, and I think the people that are here today, the ones who testified online, understand that. A lot of new information has been presented to me that has not been available to me before. Yes, I read the newspapers just like you do. Yes, I hear you. But like I say, and Commissioner Savas makes a good point about a possible pilot project. We've heard from one very small sector of Clackamas County, very small sector, with the exception of somebody on Redland Road. But this may be going on in all types of sectors, and just because we're going to pass this ordinance does not mean bad behavior is going to go away. And I think that's what you're seeking from us, to make sure that the bad actors who don't follow the rules are somehow taken care of. I tell you, there's thousands and thousands and thousands of laws on the book dealing with behavior, yet we still have people who choose not to abide by those laws. So unless there's an enforcement piece that has some teeth in it, this isn't going to do anybody any good at this point. So I'm going to recommend, Commissioner Scholl, are you ready to make a motion?
No, Chair, I just had one more comment, a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm a bit confused right now as to what is the most expeditious means for this board to provide, come up with a revised short-term rental code? How soon can we do that? By what process can we do that so we can incorporate some of the ideas and concerns we've heard here today, some of the constructive ideas from Commissioner Savas for modifying how this would be enforced? Nate, could you please tell us, give us a ballpark idea of what the most expeditious means to get there, the new code is?
And we'll have both of them. That's a good question, Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, thank you. Because...
Gary and Nate answer that.
This is very important that the folks here know the answer to that question.
So I'll speak to the minimum legal requirements, which is a repeal of the ordinance requires a first and second reading. Adoption of a new ordinance requires a first and second reading. Amendment of the current ordinance requires a first and second reading. And so in, you know, each of your pathways requires two public hearings, 14, 13 or 14 days apart, and, and so that's what you're looking at in terms of repeal or adoption or amendment. So I don't know what the calendar looks like, Gary can speak to that, but I will just say, and typically, you know, what, what we need for a first reading is actual ordinance language. And so we're required to read either the ordinance by title only or the ordinance in full in a public meeting, which is what we're, what we attempted to do here with the repeal. If we are going to try and, and use the existing framework to incorporate some of Commissioner Savas's ideas, what we would need is, is really fully formed ordinance language, and so we could fulfill that requirement. And so typically, we do that in policy sessions. We don't do that typically at a, you know, at a first reading, and so...
And that's been a rule that we have been using since January of '21. Policy session is where we do the heavy lifting, add the language, and we're not equipped to do it during a public hearing. We just don't do that. It's not transparent. And we need to post it online for weeks so other people in the county have an opportunity. It's just not transparent. Gary?
Nate covered it pretty well. The next step is a policy session, but the question today is, what do you want to do with the current ordinance? Even if you make amendments, you still need a first reading, so you have to dispense with the current ordinance somehow.
Well, yeah, we have to, even if we were to offer, you know, all the things that I want to see, what Commissioner Savas wants to see, and, and because I'm not willing to do on something this important, a, what we call a gut and stuff, because it's not clear what we're doing. I don't have the data. I don't have the data to quantify this homeowner's situation from this owner's situation, and I think that needs to be clarified. We heard from a lot of different people on that today.
So Chair, in, in the script here, it says the second reading would be Thursday, July 7th, and if there's a date that's commensurate with what Council Madcor suggested, whatever that date is, I'm willing to make the motion for the second reading.
Well, first of all, well, for, yeah, well, first of all, we need to go according to the script, as a commissioner needs to move, we read this, and then we go through that.
Sure.
And then just follow the script. Is that what you're willing to do?
Yeah, yeah, I know we need to read the title by ordinance only, I'm willing to go through that, but I just want the date.
Well, there is a date right here.
Well, the date that was commensurate with what Mr. Madcor suggested, because kicking the can to July 7th, this is going to work. We need time and the work session.
I would agree. July 7th is not enough turnaround time, I mean, everybody's on vacation all of a sudden.
Right, right.
And maybe some of us. Gary?
I'll give you two dates. So again, I'm asking to give staff time to prepare, so it would be Thursday, September 9th, or Thursday, September 15th. Those are the first two business meetings after the Labor Day holiday.
And are those Wednesdays or?
They're Thursdays, Thursday business meetings. This would be the, for the, well, it'd be technically the first reading, because you'll be amending the ordinance, but that would be the next, the next...
Okay, that would be the next, but we need policy sessions ahead of that in August.
Yep.
And this board recesses for two weeks in August.
Correct.
Yep, so Chair, I think I'm ready, if you like.
We go in order?
Yeah, we go in the order of the script.
Yes.
Okay. So let me find my position here.
I know, it's kind of, I usually have to draw out lines when I'm finished with one. Page three, middle of page three?
Chair, I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Commissioner Savas has moved we read ordinance by title only, Commissioner Scholl has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing, and Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Fisher?
No.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes for one. Clerk, please sign a number and read the ordinance by title only.
The ordinance shall be numbered 2-2022, an ordinance repealing Chapter 8.10, short-term rentals from the Clackamas County Code.
Any further discussion?
Okay, so I want to make it clear, Chair, I'm going to make a, make a motion, I want to make a clarification here, make it clear that, and I know this is not the right time, but that we schedule a work session, we'll discuss that after this is passed to some degree, and that I am not interested, as Commissioner Fisher is, I'm not interested in repealing the entire ordinance, I'm interested in amending the ordinance.
I don't...
So that, that, that's my, that's my intention, that's my intention, okay?
Chair Smith, may I speak?
Yes, point of clarification, Commissioner Fisher.
Yes, thank you. So Commissioner Savas, my understanding is that this board moving forward at this time is repealing the regulations.
Yes.
But what's going, I understand that.
So you can't, I mean, can you really make a motion for something that then is contrary to what your intent is?
I, I'm stating my intention, because the distance of time between today and September 9th gives us the opportunity to make that adjustment.
Yeah, just a point of clarification, it's also my contention that we could let these regulations go into effect, have the policy session on September 9th to begin the process of amending it through a policy session.
Well, we do that during the time between now and either September 9th or September 15th. September 9th, we will come back from a break, it'll be Labor Day. I'm not sure if that's the same week or not, I'm going to have to look at the calendar. Nate, you're up.
Yeah, just to be clear, this is first reading, and so you would need a second reading in order for the repeal to be effective, and so, so this, this will remain on the books until such time as you have a second reading and vote to, vote for the repeal. And so I'm looking at Gary, we may need to consider actually a delayed, a board order to delay the implementation once again.
Yes, we should bring that to the board next week at issues to encourage, recommend you delay the implementation of the current ordinance until 2023, just so we have cover, since it cannot go into it, we can't implement it next week.
Okay, what did you say, Gary?
So we'll come to you at issues next week to ask you to extend the implementation date of the current ordinance until 2023, because we cannot implement it next week, which...
That's right, we cannot, well, there's a motion on the table.
So there's no current motion, but I'm still confused, too, Nate, so this motion is to have a second reading, but Commissioner Savas is going to propose an amendment to the ordinance, so in that case, it's not...
I am not proposing amendment today.
Okay. So when does that happen, then?
So procedurally, what I, what I take this as is it would be a repeal of 8.10, effectively replaced by whatever this commission could agree to pass. And it may look like an amendment in practice, but legally, we would keep those separate. Does that make sense?
So it'd be a parallel path to create, work on a new ordinance in this timeframe before the second reading of repealing the current ordinance.
Correct, yeah.
And that would allow time for public disclosure, notice, people would see it, have an opportunity to absorb it, and we would follow all the procedures and then...
Got it.
I will not support, come September 9th, let's just say, that's the date we determine, I will not support a complete repeal of this ordinance as is written today.
Okay.
I think Commissioner Fisher is in agreement with that.
Okay, can we have a vote?
And I'm sorry, September 8th, September 8th is a Thursday, not the night.
Okay, so, so there's not a motion yet on the floor, so I, I'm going to make the motion for, to, well, actually, I take that back. The second, so I, Chair, I move, I move that we change the second reading, the date of the second reading to September 8th of 2022.
Nate, is that doable?
Sounds like that works for the schedule, but yes, that's a... Sounds like that works for the schedule, but yes, that's a proper motion.
Can we have the proper language for this motion?
I would say it would be, and this is the bottom of page three in your script, it's not listed as a motion, that I would move the second reading will be on Thursday, September 8th, 2022, at the board's regular scheduled business meeting at 10:00 AM.
That's basically what I'll say, but I'm happy to repeat it. I, I move that the second reading will be September 8th, Thursday, September 8th, 2022, at the board's regular scheduled business meeting at 10:00 AM.
I'll second that. Commissioner Savis has moved the second reading for this hearing, September 8, 2022. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion on this? Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
No.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion is approved by four one. Thank you, commissioners. I recommend you folks get back, get back to us and start making a list if that's what you want to do. And let's see what's doable, and let's see what's not doable. We're going to continue on, we're done with commenting, commissioners, we've all said enough. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. We have a very long consent agenda. We could be here till 1:00 or 1:30 if we don't move this meeting along. Gary, what's next?
Do you want to take a short break or keep powering through?
A five-minute break. I will start promptly at, so that clock is not with this clock, five. I will start promptly at 12:16. That will give us a five-minute comfort break, all right? 12:16, we are in recess until then. Thank you, commissioners. We have returned from a short break. Gary, what's the next item?
All right, next commissioner, Chair, commissioners, is a board discussion item. Approval of a resolution adopting changed fees for Clackamas County for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Fiscal impact is $215,970 in additional revenue. Funding is through user fees. No county general funds are involved. Nate Boderman, County Council, will give a quick presentation.
Thank you. As Administrator Schmidt noted, this item is consideration of a resolution adopting updated fees for fiscal year 2223. The resolution before you today reflects fees that are either new or changed from the current fiscal year. I understand that all these fees have been reviewed by this board previously and tentatively approved for adoption. What this resolution would do is authorize all of those separate fees as part of a single action. So with that, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any clarifying questions or comments?
Yes, Chair.
Yes.
I was under the impression when it came to us last week that we would be discussing this on Tuesday. And I brought my material with me on Tuesday, but I realized afterwards that we did not cover it on Tuesday.
Right. Oh, I thought it was going to be today. I'm sorry.
No, no. Yeah, so because it was more work session element, as you, as you said earlier, which I agree on. You know, the DIA, it's at a business meeting, it's not the time to be making work session decisions type stuff. So I, I, again, it just escaped me on Tuesday. And I did leave early. Thank you for granting me permission to go down to talk to Mr. Madcor about the previous item, which I did.
So this is additional revenue. This, this is an increase in fees, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm going to vote no, because that's, I, if we can go ahead with the vote on this?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, commissioners, you've, you've heard all of these already in policy sessions. This was only delayed a week because we wouldn't have, we didn't have five commissioners last week. That's the only reason it was delayed. And you need to do, make a decision by June 30th. So up or down, please make a decision today.
Up or down today? You know, Commissioner Savis, I appreciate that. Yeah, so I think we're just going to go ahead and I'll entertain a motion. We have some language in our script. I move, we approve the resolution adopting changed fees for Clackamas County for fiscal year 2022 dash 23. I have made the motion. Do I hear a second? Okay, thank you very much. Chair Smith has made the motion, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. I'm still a no vote on this. Any further discussion? Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Savis?
No.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
No.
Chair Smith?
No, motion fails. Thank you very much. Somebody's.
Somebody's microphone was off.
Oh, Commissioner Schrader, thank you very much.
That was an aye.
Yeah, that was an aye. Motion fails two three. What is up next?
I do want to clarify, what that means is we're going to change the adopted budget for 2021, 2022, 23, because it reflected, was going to reflect these changes. There are some fees that were, I'm sorry, I'm not going to say it, repealed fees that are now reinstated. But it will also mean some fees are not increased. So I just want to be clear, the decision you made, we'll adopt, we'll make sure it's reflected in the budget to start July 1st. All right, next is the consent agenda. It is a huge consent agenda, and Tony will do his very best, but we ask for your patience, please. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Elected officials, item one, approval of the June 16th, 2022, previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Business and Community Services, item one, approval of a grant agreement with the state of Oregon to provide funding for furniture and construction of the Gladstone Library. Grant value is $500,000. Funding is through the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a grant agreement with the state of Oregon to provide funding for furniture and construction of the Oak Lodge Library. Grant value is $750,000. Funding is through the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of an early work amendment for abatement and demolition services as part of a construction manager, general contractor contract with PNC Construction Company for construction of the Gladstone Library. Amendment value is $270,054. Contract value is increased to $358,834. Funding is through budgeted county general funds and 50% reimbursement by the city of Gladstone. Juvenile, item one, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County for juvenile detention services and associated facility operation and maintenance costs in fiscal year 2022, 2023. Agreement value not to exceed $1,841,605. Funding is through budgeted county general funds and juvenile crime prevention basic and diversion funds. Finance, item one, approval of an amendment extending the duration and modifying the rent amount of a lease with Homestead Building LLC for the Homestead Building housing the Sandy Behavioral Health Center and Women, Infants, and Children Program satellite offices for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Amendment value is $52,800. Total lease value is increased to $205,200. Funding is through fees for services and Women, Infants, and Children Program grant funds. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a lease with Emmanuel Lutheran Church for overflow parking at the Sandy Health Clinic. Lease value is $28,064 for three years and three months. Funding is through fees for services. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of an amendment extending the duration and modifying the rent amount of a lease with the Clackamas County Extension 48 Service District for two buildings for district facilities. Amendment value is $65,755.20 over two years. Total lease value is increased to $129,595.20. Funding is through lessy rental payments. No county general funds are involved. Community Corrections, item, item one, approval of an amendment extending the duration of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon State Parks to provide offender work crew services at Milo McGyver State Park. Projected annual revenue is $10,000. Funding is through Oregon State Parks. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of an amendment extending the duration of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Oregon to provide offender work crew services. Projected annual revenue is $10,000. Funding is through the city of Oregon City. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of an amendment extending the duration of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Milwaukee to provide offender work crew services. Projected annual revenue is $6,000. Funding is through the city of Milwaukee. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of an amendment extending the duration of an intergovernmental agreement with the Clackamas County, Clackamas Community College to provide offender work crew services. Projected annual revenue is $5,000. Funding is through Clackamas Community College. No county general funds are involved. Item five, approval of an amendment extending the duration of an intergovernmental agreement with Metro Regionals Government to provide offender work crew services. Projected annual revenue is $11,050. Funding is through Metro. No county general funds are involved. Item six, approval of an amendment extending the duration of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas River Water to provide offender work crews, offender service work crews. Projected annual revenue is $6,000. Funding is through Clackamas River Water. No county general funds are involved. Item seven, approval of an amendment extending the duration of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Wilsonville to provide offender work service crews. Projected annual revenue is $60,000. Funding is through the city of Wilsonville. No county general funds are involved. Item eight, approval of an amendment extending the duration of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Happy Valley to provide offender work crew services. Projected annual revenue is $40,000. Funding is through the city of Wilsonville. No county general funds are involved. Item nine, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with North, North Clackamas Water Commission to provide offender work service crews. Revenue not to exceed $50,000 over five years. Funding is through the North Clackamas Water Commission. No county general funds are involved. Health Housing and Human Services, item one, approval of the final 2022, 2026 Community Development Consolidated Plan for Submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to Maintain Eligibility for Grant Funds. Combined value of grants is $3,528,473 for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of the final 2022 Community Development Action Plan for Submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to Maintain Eligibility for Grant Funds. Combined value of grants is $3,528,473 for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of a grant application to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the 2022 Home Grant to fund affordable housing, rental assistance, and community housing development programs. Grant value is $1,133,026. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of a grant amendment, grant application to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the 2022 Emergency Solutions Grant to fund homeless services assistance programs. Grant value is $192,180. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved. Item five, approval of a grant application to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the 2022 Community Development Block Grant to fund community construction projects, public facility improvements, and public services. Grant value is $22,267. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved. Item six, approval of a local sub-recipient grant agreement with Todos Santos to provide youth-focused substance use prevention programming in rural Clackamas County middle schools. Grant value is $169,500 over three years. Funding is through county marijuana tax funds. No county general funds are involved. Item seven, approval of a local sub-recipient grant agreement with Northwest Family Services to provide youth-focused substance use prevention programming in North Clackamas Prevent Net Community Schools and through the Vibrant Futures Coalition. Grant value is $279,000 over three years, $279,000 over three years. Funding is through the county marijuana tax funds. No county general funds are involved. Item eight, approval of a local sub-recipient grant agreement with Oregon City together to provide youth-focused substance use prevention programming in Oregon City. Grant value is $139,500 over three years. Funding is through county marijuana tax funds. No county general funds are involved. Item nine, approval of a local sub-recipient grant agreement with Life Works Northwest for children's relief nursery services to families in Clackamas County. Grant value is $144,000 over two years. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. Item 10, approval of an amendment increasing funding and adjusting budgeting of a federal sub-recipient grant agreement with Foothills Community Church on behalf of its Malala Adult Community Center for the provision of meal, health, transportation, and referral services to Clackamas County residents. Amendment value is $10,000. Grant value is increased to $187,884. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Item 11, approval of an amendment increasing funding and adjusting budgeting of a federal sub-recipient grant agreement with Oregon City on behalf of its Pioneer Community Center for the provision of meal, health, transportation, and referral services to Clackamas County residents. Amendment value is $2,269. Grant value is increased to $188,232. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Item 12, approval of an amendment increasing funding and adjusting budgeting of a federal sub-recipient grant agreement with Lake Oswego on behalf of its Lake Oswego Adult Community Center for the provision of meal, health, transportation, and referral services to Clackamas County residents. Amendment value is $10,000. Grant value is increased to $134,877. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Item 13, approval of an amendment increasing funding and adjusting budgeting of a federal sub-recipient grant agreement with Friends of Canby Adult Center Incorporated for the provision of meal, health, transportation, and referral services to Clackamas County residents. Amendment value is $32,957. Grant value is increased to $269,692. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Item 14, approval of an amendment increasing funding and adjusting budgeting of a federal sub-recipient grant agreement with Wilsonville on behalf of its Wilsonville Community Center for the provision of meal, health, transportation, and referral services to Clackamas County residents. Amendment value is $10,000. Grant value is increased to $128,410. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Item 15, approval of a local sub-recipient grant agreement with Community Living Above to provide youth-focused substance use prevention programming in West Lynn. Grant value is $132,000 over three years. Funding is through county marijuana tax funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 16, approval of an amendment increasing funding and adjusting budgeting of a federal sub-recipient grant agreement with Friends of the Estacada Community Center Incorporated for the provision of meal, health, transportation, and referral services to Clackamas County residents. Amendment value is $7,253, and grant value is increased to $163,900. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Item 17, approval of an amendment increasing funding and adjusting budgeting of a federal sub-recipient grant agreement with Hoodland Senior Center for the provision of meal, health, transportation, and referral services to Clackamas County residents. Amendment value is $11,592, and grant value is increased to $94,320. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Item 18, approval of an amendment increasing funding and adjusting budgeting of a federal sub-recipient grant agreement with Sandy on behalf of its Sandy Senior and Community Center for the provision of meal, health, transportation, and referral services to Clackamas County residents. Amendment value is $12,000, and grant value is increased to $206,706. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Item 19, approval of an amendment increasing funding and adjusting budgeting of a federal sub-recipient grant agreement with Gladstone on behalf of its Gladstone Senior Center for the provision of meal, health, transportation, and referral services to Clackamas County residents. Amendment value is $10,000, and grant value is increased to $66,058. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Item 20, approval of an amendment increasing funding and extending the duration of an agency services contact, contract with Durgash LLC for on-call hotel rooms for temporary housing participants. Amendment value is $246,000, and contract value is increased to $176,400. Funding is through American Rescue Plan Act funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 21, approval of an amendment increasing funding and extending the duration of an agency services contract with SRS LLC for on-call hotel rooms for temporary housing participants. Amendment value is $214,000, and contract value is increased to $11,014,400. Funding is through American Rescue Plan Act funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 22, approval of a federal sub-recipient grant agreement with Clackamas Service Center for provision of food support to individuals and families impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Grant value is $48,500. Funding is through federal pass-through funds from the Oregon Department of Housing and Community Services. No county general funds are involved. Item 23, approval of a local sub-recipient grant agreement with Project Access Now to fund a community health worker for chronic disease prevention planning and outreach to high-risk populations in Clackamas County. Grant value is $75,000 for 18 months. Funding is through Public Health Restricted Fund, Health Share of Oregon, and budgeted county general funds. Item 24, approval of an amendment extending the duration of a federal sub-recipient grant agreement with Central City Concern for the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program. Grant value remains at $615,305.52. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Justice and budgeted county general funds. Item 25, approval of a local sub-recipient grant. Item 25, approval of a local subrecipient grant agreement with Clackamas Women's Services to continue providing domestic violence shelter and supportive services to survivors of domestic violence in Clackamas County. Grant value is $858,784 over four years. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
We ha, Tony. Way to go.
Good job.
Very good job. Does any commissioner wish to remove any item off the consent agenda?
Oh, Chair Smith, let me opine for a moment.
I wasn't asked, Tony, to repeat everything, but I decided not to.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, you know, for a few, quite a few questions.
Yeah.
Just harassing you.
I know you are. Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda now, please.
Commissioner Schrader has moved for approval of the consent agenda. Commissioner Fisher has seconded that. Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Commissioners, I'm gonna take a moment, and we're going to go back up to the fee adoption. I'm going to change my vote from a no to a yes. Gary, how do I go about doing that?
Nate, will you help me, please? Do we redo the vote again, or can she just state it?
On the resolution adopting change fees for Clackamas County, I will say...
Let's...
I will say my reasons for it, but go ahead.
Well, so let's get a motion on the floor in a second and then revote.
Redo the motion, please.
Okay, I'm going to... The reason for that is it's a fundamental change and impact to the organization. If this doesn't go forward, on one hand, we had a previous meeting in here, a very long meeting, on gee, we want all of these regulations in place to implement a short-term rental program of which we don't have money for, and yet we vote down all the fees that keeps some of these programs intact that we expect them to do the services. Additionally, there were fees that were lowered. Additionally, no new fees were adopted. I think the amount of $215,970 isn't minimal, but it does have impact to our organization, and I would entertain a motion again on this for a revote.
So moved.
Okay. I move we approve the resolution adopting change fees for Clackamas County for fiscal year 2022-23. And Commissioner Fisher, thank you for your motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Mark.
Yes, I thank you for that clarification on the issue. I fail to recall, too, that a lot of these fees had been eliminated. So thank you for bringing this back.
Yeah, and I think we... I was still thinking about the past very long meeting we had, and I think my vote may have been more emotional than it was anything else. Thank you. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, just real quickly, as I stated, I think last week, I was absent that particular day, which you discussed it in the work session, and I thought, again, we would discuss it this Tuesday, but no worries. But I did want to restate that some of my concerns are anything that was related to increasing the cost of permitting that builds homes, and so that was one of the fundamental things I thought was in there. A lot of good stuff in there as far as, but I didn't want to go into detail, and I know it's late.
Right, and I do agree with you on that, Commissioner Savas. Maybe we can find ways to mitigate as we go forward. Seeing no further discussion, Tony, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Savas.
Uh, no.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 4-1. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to revisit this issue. Okay, we get to recess as a board of county commissioners and convene as a water environment services for the next item. Gary.
First, thank you for your leadership chair for that discussion right now. It's appreciated. All right, you next have the consent agenda for water environment services. Tony, please read the consent agenda.
Item one, approval of a public improvement contract with Jesse Rodriguez Construction LLC for the Scott Creek Park Mount Scott Trail Storm Repair Project, replacing approximately 220 feet of existing storm pipe. Contract value is $152,830. Funding is through Water Environment Services Surface Water Capital Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a grant application to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation to provide funding for construction of the Three Creeks Floodplain Enhancement Project. Grant value is $3,800,000. Funding is through the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Does any commissioner wish to remove anything off the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Seconded.
Commissioner Schrader has moved for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda. Commissioner Scholl has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a Water Environment Services Board and convene as a Development Agency Board.
Next is the consent agenda for the Development Agency. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
For the Development Agency, there is one item, approval of a board order and lease to Milnee Masonry, Incorporated, for development agency property for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Lease value is $19,104. Funding is through lessee rental payments. No county general funds are involved.
Does any commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda.
Seconded.
Commissioner Schrader has moved for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda. Commissioner Scholl has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, commissioners. I will now adjourn as a Development Agency and convene as a Library Service District Board. Gary.
Next is the consent agenda for the Library Service District Board. Tony, will you please read the consent agenda?
For the Library District, there is one item, approval of a resolution for a supplemental budget of less than 10% for fiscal year 2021 to 2022, increasing the total budget and appropriations. Budget is increased by $1,325,836. Total budget is now $24,299,571, and appropriations are increased by $1,325,836. Total appropriations are now $24,299,571. Funding is through additional beginning fund balance, taxes, interest, and penalties. No county general funds are involved.
Does any commissioner wish to remove anything from this consent agenda? Seeing none, Tony, please call the poll.
A motion?
Oh, I need a motion. Hello. Got ahead of myself. Go ahead, Commissioner. I am hungry.
I'm so hungry.
Commissioner Fisher, go ahead and make a motion.
Oh, my gosh, you're gonna make me open my script.
You move approval.
Commissioner Schrader is doing so well with the motions. So moved for the Library District.
Second.
Commissioner Fisher has made a motion to approve the Development...
Oh, it's the Development Agency.
No, we are on the Library District.
Okay.
And Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Thank you very much. Any further comment? Seeing none, Tony, you can call the poll now.
Commissioner Savas.
I, too. I'm hungry. Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. You know what's confusing is the next item we're going into. I will now adjourn as a Library Service District Board and convene as the Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District Board. Gary.
Yeah, sorry, I see the typo there. Apologize, commissioners. This is the consent agenda for the Extension and 4-H Service District. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
There is one item, approval of an amendment extending the duration and modifying the rent amount of a lease from Clackamas County for two buildings for district facilities. Amendment value is $65,755.20 over two years. Total lease value is increased to $129,595.20. Funding is through taxes and other revenue sources. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you. Does any commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Extension and 4-H Service District Consent Agenda.
Seconded.
Commissioner Schrader has moved for the approval of the Extension and 4-H Service District Consent Agenda. Commissioner Scholl has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion has been approved 5-0. I will now adjourn as the Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Up next is public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the objective for consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for publiccommunication@bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meeting due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, taking in-person testimony first. Tony, do we have any? We do not have any, I'm seeing.
Madam Chair, at this time, I do not have anyone registered to testify on Zoom. If there is anyone who would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature. Madam Chair, I do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary, can you introduce the next item?
Next, yes, next is county administrator update. I will skip my report because of the late hour. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner comments are up next, starting first. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Well, I'll be brief, just to say I really enjoyed the conversation on Tuesday evening with the community leaders meeting. It was open to them, discuss any issue, wide-ranging issues that they had on their mind, and I would say that, and rightfully so, that top of mind was fire dangers and fire issues and responding to forest fires. That seemed to dominate the conversation. I thought it was a great conversation and look forward to the next.
Thank you.
With that, I conclude my comments.
Yes, and we all participated in that two-hour meeting the other evening. Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, good morning or good afternoon, Clackamas County. Tomorrow morning, I'll be in Lyons, Oregon with the Association of Oregon and California Counties Board to meet with Oregon Department of Forestry and BLM personnel to get a tour of the recovery activities in Marion County on the 2020 burn. On public safety, we got a bad combination coming up this weekend. It's gonna be hot, yet river levels are very high, swift, and cold, so people, parents, when you go to the river this weekend, be very, very cautious. On impact, we had a meeting last night. I'll brief you on the LNO comments on Tuesday morning.
Thank you.
And also on wildfire forecast, although we've had a lot of rain, we're most likely gonna see some heat here in the next few weeks. Things can dry out. Next Thursday, fireworks goes on sale. I remind people to be very, very cautious this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner Schrader, you're up next.
Yeah, I just have one thing to mention, and that is I would invite everyone to come to the Lake Oswego Festival of the Arts this weekend, the 24th, the 25th, and the 26th tomorrow night. They're having their patron preview, and then it'll be a great day in the park for two days, Saturday and Sunday. And also, there is a dedication to the Gladstone Nature Park Butterfly Pollinator Garden, and that is also happening on Saturday, the 25th.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Thank you, Chair Smith. I just wanna plant something in your brains. I had the opportunity to participate in a presentation on Built for Zero, which is a national movement to basically, to really measure homelessness and make it functionally zero. I also had the opportunity through our Continuum of Care, COC, meeting where that's a meeting where providers across Clackamas County on social services issues meet and share information, and Abby gave a little briefing of where Clackamas County is in this process of working on our data, getting our numbers together, really being able to track. We are moving ahead in such a significant way. I'm just planting the seed. I think this is something that the commission will all want to be briefed on at some point, probably not before September, but leaving that with Gary, it's really interesting and exciting effort that's happening that we are taking the lead on in Clackamas County. And that's all I have for today.
That's good to hear. All commissioner comments are very good. I'm going to be brief to say I have an appointment in about a half hour, so hearing no important business before this meeting, we are adjourned.